I could make this need for discussion table.
Yeah, I mean, to each their own. Good for her. I mean, that's something she's always wanted to do.
I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Human Services Committee. If we can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If the clerk will take the role, please.
Commissioner McConnell.
Here.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Present.
Commissioner Bohm. Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Van den Bosch.
Here.
Commissioner Beeden.
Here.
Are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda?
Make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We have a couple of citizens wishing to be heard tonight. So Dawn Schaefer.
Hi, I'm Dawn Schaefer. I live in Fort Gracia. My children attend Port Huron Northern. My nine-year-old right now is home because he does not want to wear a mask to school. He does not like wearing one. He feels suffocated by it. He has anxiety, and that does not help his anxiety. He had a 504 when he was in middle school. We switched to another homeschool program last year because of the masks, and then when he came back, I don't think that was reinstated for him. But I want to talk a little bit about masks because I work in healthcare. I wear an N95 every day. I do feel exhausted at the end of the day, as does he. He would come home and sleep all afternoon, all evening, skip dinner, no homework, and I wouldn't see the kid because of the masks that you guys are forcing on our children. So this is an N95 respirator. This was sent to me by the MDHHS because I was a caregiver for my husband's sister. I have the letter to prove it. This is NIOSA approved. On the back, it says, "Warning: 95% effective against particulates, aerosols free of oil. This respirator helps protect against certain particulate contaminants, but does not eliminate exposure to or the risk of contracting disease or infection." So why the hell are we wearing them? These surgical masks from China. In Chinese writing, there's very little English on here. But what I can read on it is it says that it's sterilized with ethylene oxide. Do you, anybody know what ethylene oxide does to your body? It's the same thing that the Q-tips have been sterilized with, that we're all shoving up our nose. Now they're sterilized, the new ones at my work are with gamma radiation. We all know what radiation does to you. Ethylene oxide causes cancer. We're putting these on our faces, our children's faces, and they're breathing them all day long. All day long. So where does the superintendent get his power to mandate masks on our children? He's not a lawmaker. He has not passed it through any kind of executive branch of the government. Every other school, except Algenac, I think, is recommending, which is how it should be. My child should not be home on his own trying to educate himself because the masks are being mandated. He does not have the option. They're given no option. It's either you wear a mask or you stay home. I've sent him to school. I've sent him to school and they've sent him home. So he is being denied an education because of this, and I'm angry.
Our next public comment is from Sean Treadaway.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you. I'm going to start with a quote from the Times Herald. St. Clair County's medical health official issued advisory to local school districts Monday, encouraging universal masking and other mitigating measures to be put in place if in-person learning is to continue until winter break. Where is this advisory? What exactly did it say? Who specifically did Dr. Merkentot send the advisory to? Does the good doctor only send the advisory to other unelected bureaucrats like school superintendents? Where can we common folk find this advisory? I'll go ahead and quote the Port Huron Superintendent as well. "We continue to have a strong relationship with the St. Clair County Health Department, but this was an internal decision based on our district needs and not those of the entire county." That was Theo Kuhler asked. Moving on to another quote. "We only have a handful of tools we know can reduce the burden of viral transmission, and these tools must be used immediately if we hope to have any effect," Merkentot said in the notice. Failure to use these tools will likely create increased transmission and lead to further illness and potential loss of life. Your moral and legal responsibility to provide a safe environment to students is clear, clearly contingent on your decisions at this time. So morally and legally responsible. Who is she to make this comment? Can she prove where each case is coming from inside of the schools? Can she pin down without a doubt that they're, you know, it's coming from the school-aged children? Provide a safe environment to the students. Is there something that we do not know? A potential loss of life? It's a rather drastic statement for a virus that has a crude death rate of 0.2% per 100,000. That's directly from the CDC. I have this if you want it. Lost my spot, sorry. That number coincides with suicide amongst the same age group. We even had the community mental health director stand at this very podium and say that that number wasn't showing an uptick when it came to the mental health and suicide among kids. So how drastic is this number? One death, don't get me wrong, is too many, but... So let's move on to another statement from the Health Department, directly recently printed in the Times Herald. There were 900 people hospitalized for COVID-19 Monday. The county reported a total of 26,000 since the start of the pandemic. St. Clair County doesn't even have 900 beds between all the hospitals combined. Where are these numbers coming from? This is a direct quote from the Health Director. I'm running out of time. I'm going to speed it up. Again, again, I ask, who the hell's in charge of the Health Director or Medical Health Officer she's called now? If we look at org chart directly from your website, it starts with the Board of Commissioners, moves on to the Advisory Board of Health, which one of you, Ms. Beeden is on the Board of Health.
Please wrap it up.
Then to the County Administrator, and then to the Medical Health Officer. So repeated times, asked who's in charge, why she continues to pretty much run amok and make her own decisions, her own choices, and now she's pressuring the schools to have unilateral decisions. These superintendents haven't even gone to their boards. Your board.
Please finish.
You abide by your rules. Thank you.
Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard? Thank you. Kevin Watkins.
Well, six feet away, so I can take my mask down. I didn't really mean to speak tonight. It just kind of came in. I came to hear my guy Jerry Johnson give his presentation. I mean, she was stinking. I never let go. I respect people, respect how they feel, but not necessarily everything that comes out of their mouths. All this nonsense about masks are bad. Don't fall for that Dr. Bombay stuff. Look him up, who he is. Quack. Dr. Merkentot's a very reputable physician. She knows what she's talking about. And masks and vaccines is our way out of this pandemic. The mask to hold for it, the vaccines to prevent the spread. So this, you know, you're hearing this time and time, and don't fall for that. Don't fall for this reason why we wear masks. I wear masks for you. You wear masks for me. Keep your droplets to yourself. It's airborne virus, and it spreads that way. Keep the droplets to yourself. That slows the spread down because we are all potential vectors, and the vaccines, like they have been throughout time, they're smallpox. I remind you again, with mandates, George Washington mandated his troops to be vaccinated because they were losing more troops to smallpox than bullets. So please stop. Don't listen to that nonsense. That's exactly what it is. Mr. Theo Kuhler's is doing the right thing. Those superintendents who are not doing the right thing, shame on them. Shame on them. You're putting our kids at harm's way. When kids start dropping like flies, like they were in the early 20th century for measles, whooping cough, et cetera, you will get the hit. Why wait to that? We got a problem. We already dealt with shootings. Four kids dead now, okay, because we're worried about background checks. But now you want to work, you don't want them to wear masks. You don't want them to be vaccinated. We're just talking about masks. Masks, that's ridiculous. Please don't listen to that. Please don't, don't attack Dr. Merkentot for doing the right thing, trying to save lives. And I'm going to notice also, okay, 35 years of experience with a master's degree. I believe in research. When you have a master's degree, you do research. This person came up here talking, I don't know where she's getting the information from. Masks make a difference. Thank you.
Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard? Hearing none. Moving on to updates. None. Any conceptual initiatives?
None this evening.
No old business, so moving on to new business. The MSUE Annual Report and Presentation?
Make a motion. Send that to the full board.
Support.
Yeah, Jerry, you're... Do you want to give your presentation?
Yes.
Yeah, we normally do the motion and support, then we start the discussions.
All right. Every county's different. It's your field. I'm just here to play on it. Thank you. Actually, I have some good news for you and some great news. I mean, the good news is we had a really good year, and the great news is you don't have to sit through a PowerPoint presentation tonight. So I say, I'll save that for when Commissioner Bohm is back, because I know he loves those. First of all, thank you so much for partnering with MSU Extension. It makes a difference. We make a difference in the community, and we can't do it without the partnership of counties. For those that don't know, our funding is about 38% through grants, 32% through the state government, 16% county government, 12% federal, and 2% from the MSU General Fund. So, you know, you can see you're roughly about a sixth of our funding, but grants is the largest component of our funding, and it's the fastest growing. So we're not just trying to be reliant on the existing sources. All things change, and we know funding can be challenging. So again, thank you for that. You have a copy of our annual report in front of you, and surprise number three, or good thing number three, I'm not going to read through every page because I know you can do that. You also have, for example, by way of example, an agriculture impact report. We have a number of these impact reports. I choose, I chose to give you the one from the agriculture impact report. The thumb of Michigan has 21% of the state's farmland. 21% of the state's farms, 28% of the state's farmland, and Michigan is the second most diverse agricultural state in the United States, second-oide of California. So per square mile, we're the most diverse, right? So lots of good things going on in Michigan. I guess, you know, I'll try to do something a little less controversial, but, you know, by show of hands, I'd be interested in how many people, if they're shopping in a grocery store, prefer to buy hormone-free poultry? If you're going to buy chicken, would you prefer to buy hormone-free poultry? Okay. So first of all, there's, it doesn't exist because hormones exist environmentally, so there's no such thing as hormone-free anything. But second of all, and it might be a surprise, it would have been a surprise to me, is you can't treat pork and poultry with hormones in the United States. It's illegal. So, and again, so part of the education we would provide, if a mom's going to shop and she goes, well, this chicken says hormone-free, and this one doesn't, but this one's more, I want to treat, I want to buy what's best for my kids, neither one has hormones in it. And if you write hormone-free, you have to put as required by the federal government, if you read the whole statement, but it can be deceiving, right? It's the truth, but it's deceiving. There is, you can't find poultry in this country with hormones in it, with added hormones in it. Another thing that would be interesting, obviously beef is an example of something that can be treated with hormones. It's very, very small amount, and it's estrogen. That's the hormone. The amount of hormones in a hamburger goes up by about 5% with hormone-treated beef, and you might have three micrograms. You get a million times more of that with flaxseed, right? You get a million times more of that with soybeans. You get a million more with soy milk. Far more estrogen in soy milk than you'd get in eating a 15-pound steak. So there's a lot of deception out there. So we don't advocate, we educate. We don't tell people, buy organic, don't buy organic, buy GMO, don't buy GMO. Here's the difference. You decide, right? So that's what we do with extension. If you think education, you should think about extension. All of us, or a lot of us, if we had the chance after high school to go get a degree, your degree is in engineering, or it's in medicine, or it's in teaching, but it's not in all those things, right? So mine was, my undergrad was engineering. I don't know, I didn't know anything about everything else. I could barely get my degree, you know? I just wanted to get my degree. I didn't care about everybody else's degree. So we bring that to the community. Human Resources. So what I'm going to do, because it's not in your report, is give you some HR updates because they're pretty significant this year, and in a good way. Dr. Quentin Tyler, you might have heard, was appointed as the Director of Extension. He was interim. That interim was removed in the summer. Dr. Tyler originally is from Kentucky. He has a background in extension. We hope to get him out here, and obviously we'll do some things to introduce him to some key stakeholders when the time comes. Patrick Cudney, longtime with extension, over a quarter of a century, is stepping down from his role as Associate Director. So Patrick would be my boss, and everybody else is District Director, but he's moving into a new role. He's going to be the Director of Governmental and Stakeholder Relations. So if any of you worked with the government, you knew Dr. Drew Montre. She left her organization for Feeding America. We think and hope she'll be back. It's kind of a boomerang role, we think, but she was wonderful, but she's got a great opportunity, and she can live in Frankenmuth and work in Chicago, and she's got young kids. So it was really good. We tried to talk her out of leaving unsuccessfully, but Pat's moved in that role, and Patrick knows everything about extension. So what happens in the interim is Matt Shane will have field operations. Matt covered this district before I got here, and so all the district directors report to Matt until we find a permanent replacement for that position. Again, Matt's a wonderful resource, so I don't see any weakness with any of the changes that have been made. So what have we done in some of the different institutes? In AABI, for example, our Agribusiness Institute, we have all these farms. We've doubled the number of educators in the thumb in the last 14 months. So we have five counties in District 10. It's the thumb counties. We had three AABI educators. Now we have six. Jenna Phaler is a Field Crops educator. She started November 1st. She has background with Dow AgriScience. She also is working for a seed producer up in the thumb, so we don't have to convince her to live in Huron County. She already lives there, and she already likes it. So she's a very good, young professional, so we've added her to the team. Her focus is going to be on nutrient management with our field crops farmers. And then Caleb Ortner, we also hired him. He started November 8th, and his specialty is going to be precision agriculture and working with Mike Staton, who is the Soybean Guru for the state of Michigan. So very strong hires. I was, I was the chair for that search committee and lucked out. We were hiring for one, but they were so good. I said, "We cannot reject one of the, either of these two people. They're both so good." So we got to hire both of them. Caleb's going to be office in Tuscola County. Again, they cover all the counties of the thumb, so it is a St. Clair County resource. Both of these people are. And then about a year ago, we hired Jared Jaboric, and Jared is a PhD. The others were master's degrees, and he's a Beef Feedlot Systems educator, and he's in Sandalack County. He lives up in Sandusky now. And he's a PhD from the Ohio State University, so he probably didn't want to show up today after that. But very, again, great young talent. Also was on, I was the chair for that search. We hired him. But he works with producers who are raising beef, right? And so, because there's lots of money in it, you know, the input costs for everything have went sky-high in the last year, right? Inflation hasn't just affected your dinner table, it's affected the farmers. So these are very important resources. Moving on to St. Clair County. First of all, I'm very blessed to have a great advisory council. I have at least three advisors from every county, and I have four in St. Clair County. It's my largest. And my advisors on my board are Don Fletcher, who you all know well, Kevin Watkins, who spoke here just a moment ago, Phil Pavlov, a former representative and senator from the area, and then Jessica Brown, who works for St. Clair County Community College. She's the DEI Director for the college. So we've got a very strong, diverse advisory board, filled with folks with ag backgrounds, business, and education. So I'm going to let you read through the report, but I will tell you that our Community Food and Environment Institute, you know, that would include Sea Grant. A number of you were at some of the lakefront water level symposiums that we put on, some in this county, some in other counties, but Sea Grant just does a wonderful, wonderful job, great resource. We did Water School, which is for folks like you who are in elected office, that helps you make better decisions as it pertains to water. We had 310 last year from various counties, so that'll be coming up again this year as well. And then we do the, if you're a commissioner, we do the county commissioner training, right? Or we might do citizen planner in your county, depending on what your needs are. So that's what Seavey does. And then Andy Northrup, who's in the office here, does a lot with tourism. He works with EDAs throughout the state of Michigan, but certainly the focus is here, and there's FIT, which is First Impressions for Tourism. You know, I grew up here, but I lived away for 30 years. When I come back, I'm a boater, and I'll boat down to St. Clair. I know what to do. I boat to Marine City. I'm like, well, how do I get in here? Where's the, how can I get gas? And of course, you probably can't, and we're fixing all that in Marine City, but that's something we would look at. Hey, I'm new here. Where do I rent the bikes? Where's the bike trail? Where's, you know, that kind of stuff. So I know we're very focused on tourism with Blue Meets Green and other agencies and other groups that get together, but we try to help with that. Then we have Health and Nutrition, and I'll give you another question here, since it's a very energetic group. What's the one thing that you can do, what's the only thing a human being can do to control all three parts of their brain at the same time, right? Your thinking brain, your mammalian brain, your reptilian brain, right? We all have three parts. There's only one thing you can do that can monitor and control them. It's breathing, and that's it. There's no other way, right? And there are, and there are controlled breathing exercises you can do that will actually slow your brain down or speed it up, or get you, if you're really raging, it can get you back to where you can get into your thinking brain and make sound decisions. And that would be offered in a lot more in a lot of the educational programs. We, again, as a chemical engineer, I had no idea. I couldn't even, you know, I was doing a distillation column with breathing. But that is something, again, a lot of people wouldn't know. That's education we provide. We do things like Relax: Alternatives to Anger. We do things like Stress Less with Mindfulness. I've taken both those courses. They're excellent courses. You can go in person. You can go on Zoom. We've added a resource to this county. Jackie Rabine now works out of our office here. Formerly, she was in Macomb County. She's a St. Clair County resident. She lives down near Algenac, but we poached her from Macomb County, and we, actually, she's fully funded through a partnership with St. Clair County Community Mental Health. So they have a grant, and Jackie's doing all this programming with the two programs I mentioned, Powerful Tools for Caregivers. If you're a caregiver, you can't leave home. Your mom has Alzheimer's. I got to be with her all the time. But we do some things online where you can get that training that you need without having to leave your mom when she's by your bedside. Jackie's on a great job. I am asking for everybody's help in here to get more people signed up for courses. I'll tell you, in Macomb County, if our youth went through and got put on probation, they were voluntold. They had to take the Relax course. And they had two choices. You can go pay $800 for private anger management, or you can go to MSU Evidence-Based Program. And I think at one time, we used to ask people, can you pay 20? And they said, no. We said, fine, it's free. We don't even ask anymore, so it's just free. We are working with the judges. I've had conversation with a number of judges in this county, a long conversation with Judge Armstrong, Mona Armstrong, just a few weeks ago, and she's recommending, her advice was, that's great, and I'd be happy to volunteer people to do that where it's appropriate. What I'd like even more is if they show up in my courtroom and they've already started. So she said her recommendation was go through the public defender and let, get them on board too. So again, I'm saying that because we need help doing that. I am working with various judges, in conversations with two or three of them right now, but you guys, your word goes a long way. The other things, I'll move on to. AABI, we kind of talked about that, but I'll ask another question. How many people or their spouse, their husband or their wife, when they're grocery shopping, if you're buying orange juice, would you prefer to buy non-GMO orange juice? If you have a choice, are you going to buy non-GMO orange juice? Okay, so hands go up. So there's no such thing as, genetically modified oranges don't exist in the commercial field. So every orange juice you buy, it's all non-GMO. There's no such thing as a genetically modified orange juice. But if you go buy a tropical, we'll say non-GMO orange juice. And coming from the food industry, I can empathize because they're like, hey, we're under attack because we got to tell them there's no GMO, or mom's going to think there's GMO in it. That's their defense. But on the other hand, somebody on a limited income is going there to buy orange juice for her family and spending 50 cents more because she thinks non-GMO means something, and it doesn't. So again, education, right? That's the difference. Making good decisions, it's knowledge. We do a lot, Project Red, here in the county. Some of you are familiar with on the egg side. We had over 500 kids attend this year. You know, Lori Warchuck, our 4-H coordinator, we have, or you have, one of the best program coordinators in the state. You know, it's a unique position. As you know, this is, there's only two counties left where it's a county staff that's a 4-H program coordinator. Lori's one of them, which is why Ramway is so small, because we credit you back for the 4-H piece. We have 600, we have one of the strongest, largest 4-H programs in the state of Michigan, though. We have 608 youth in clubs, 241 volunteers, and I think that's a little low. I think we have more than that. We have nearly 4,000 kids that were reached one way or another through some form of programming in the last year. Lori had a 98% retention rate through COVID, far and away the highest in the state. Nobody came close to that. Our district actually is very good. The thumb did very well, but Lori had the best, and she didn't do it by going out to make friends when COVID hit. She did it because for 15 or 20 years, she's had really strong relationships with the fair board and with the community. Lori also received this year the Meritorious Service Award for the state for 4-H program coordinator. She was the only one. So if you see here, if you know Lori, congratulate her. We had great fair attendance. I was out at the fair this year. All five counties did great. We dropped our par fees for 4-H, so there are no participation fees. We used to scholarship sometimes kids with lower-income families, but that was still a point of embarrassment. They had to say, I need to have a scholarship. So we've removed the entry fee. Nobody has to pay to join 4-H anymore. And as you know, 4-H youth more likely to attend college, more likely to finish on time, more likely to be sitting in this room than their peers. And not growing up in 4-H, I can honestly say, and seeing these kids for the last three years, there are 14-year-old girls that deliver a better presentation than a three-time elected senator. I mean, it's, I'm amazed at the confidence that these young boys and girls have when they deliver this because they know the subject matter inside and out, and they have permission to fail. It's a little different than traditional school, and I'm not against traditional school, but they learn differently in 4-H, and they get to pick what they're going to specialize in, right? Nothing against Boy Scouts. They'll tell you, you're going to do this, 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 this. I should be Eagle Scout. 4-H, you can decide. I want to go into agriculture. I'd like to go into science. I'd like to go into writing. I'd like to go into art. You get to pick what you do. So again, 4-H is a very powerful precursor to success in adult life. Again, would encourage you to, that's one thing this county needs, and I was pushing hard on it through COVID. I stopped, is we need a second full-time program coordinator. We should have a second coordinator focused on the south side of Port Huron, just trying to reach our children of color, children from lower economic situations. We have one and a half coordinators, but, you know, I'm going to be working with school districts, with other funding sources, but we should have two full-time program coordinators in St. Clair County. The other things, I guess, I would add is that, you know, we're really well ingrained in the community. When I first moved here, I called a number of you on the board, Commissioner Bohm and some others, and they gave advice when I was taking the job, and they said, hey, we need MSU Extension to get more plugged. and they gave advice when I was taking the job, and they said, hey, we need MSU Extension to get more plugged in to be a bigger part of what's going on, and we took that advice. You know, I'm on Blue Meets Green. We've got a really good advisory board. A few of us, Judge Damon and Mr. Watkins and I are the founders of the Diversity Initiative of St. Clair County. It's a non-political, nonpartisan group that just connects people from all over the county. Been highly successful in working with a number of department heads in the county as well. So we're very proud of that. Gypsy Moths this year, right? We're front and center with that, and we've enabled a number of agencies in different counties through our partnership with Friends of St. Clair River. We enabled them to take a lead role in that. And Carrie Hepting was good at herding the cats and getting us all in the same room to do just that. But we're here. We, our ask is that if there is an issue that involves education, call us. If we can't provide it, we likely can refer you to somebody that does. So with that, I'll take any questions.
The Project Red at the park, is it fourth graders that go through that?
Fifth graders, I think.
I've been through it with them different times. I tell you what, I mean, it was, that's a program that I think everybody should have the opportunity to go. I learned more, you know, maybe I slept a lot in fifth grade, and I don't remember what was going on. But that was a pretty impressive program that went.
You know, it really is, and the embryology that we do, you know, where the kids get to see chickens hatch, you know, little chicks hatch, and we did it this year even virtually when we couldn't get in. We could, every school in the county would have us in for that, you know, for our elementary-age kids to do that. The other point is if our young women in the community, if they don't have a strong exposure to science by about age 12 or 13, they're not going to choose a science career, right? It's not quite the same for boys based on research, but for girls, it's really important. They have to be, you know, I've got three daughters too. They have to be, let them make a choice. They're going to be intimidated, and even though they could fully do it, they're not going to do it if they haven't been exposed, you know, prior to the early teens. So that's also an important consideration. But yeah, it's a, I didn't grow up with it either, but it's a wonderful thing if you ever get the chance. This is one of the bigger ones that I've been to is right here in St. Clair County.
Jerry, where's the best place for people to find out what courses are available or the different classes and online? Where's the best place to go?
No, really good question. We do route, we're part of the community collaborative, so we route through that email list. Certainly goes out through advisory board. We post things. We have a website and a Facebook site in the county. And then if you go through Extension, there's just a litany of information. But we have, again, educators that even if they're not housed here, they'll come here and provide the education. But, you know, there's a big need. We know, and some folks, I understand all the COVID anger because we all have it for one reason or another. But, you know, my oldest daughter teaches elementary school down in Dearborn, you know, and she's 27. She's been teaching for a few years, and she's saying, kids are way behind, you know? Kids are not where they should be right now, right? They're behind. So anything we can do to enhance that is a good thing. So, you know, 4-H is one way to do that. But as far as all the other programming, again, we partner, you know, we've worked with, obviously, Dev Johnson and at Mercantat with a lot of other department heads. In some counties, we do Stress Less with Mindfulness for a whole administration building, or we'll do it for a whole police department. Because it's, again, there are methods that actually work. It's not like, well, see how this happens. It will work, right? And then one other reason they teach people to focus on your breathing is you focus on your breathing, you're not in the past, and you're not in the future. If you're focused and thinking about your breathing and your chest is rising and everything else, you're in the present. So it can kind of slow down the worry and that, you know, the hamster wheel of, I shouldn't have done that yesterday, or why did that person yell at me yesterday, and what am I going to do tomorrow? This breathing gets you in the present, where you can think a little bit better. But you can go to those sites, Georgia. You can also, you know, you can certainly call any of our staff if you're looking for something in particular, because we do cover a lot of areas. But again, we're not going to fish. We're going to teach you how to fish, right? We're going to teach you how to do it for yourself. Home food preservation, we can't, we've thousands and thousands of people in the last two years because they're staying home. They have to have something to do with their time. So they want to be, you know, feel useful.
Any other questions for Jerry?
Just one thing. 48 years ago, when I was in college, learned about the breathing thing then, and then the chemical reaction that's happening in your brain, if you can concentrate on it, you can control your rage if you need to, and you just learned that right here in St. Clair County Community College 48 years ago.
It's, it works. Like I said, it's very, you know, we get focused on one thing, and we don't know what we don't know. So it's, I would ask, again, challenge you to try somehow. You can take them by Zoom, like the one I did was one hour over lunch for five days. So you don't, it's not a huge travel commitment if you don't want to attend in person. So again, I thank you again for your support and your time.
Commissioner Beeden, if I could, maybe I should rescind my motion and just have a motion to receive and file this because they're not going to have, this isn't going to be an action item on our full board member. If I could, I want to withdraw my motion, make a motion to receive and file the presentation and the report.
Okay.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item B, the 2022 Memorandum of Agreement, MSU Extension Services in Slankir County.
Who will make a motion to send that to the full board?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item C, Health Department Space Study.
I'd make the motion to send this to the full board.
Support.
All in favor?
I do have questions on this one. The $33,250, I know this is for a study, but there has to be some type of endgame. So what you potentially are looking for, they have to give a parameter prior to, to come up with this amount of money, what you're looking at. So that's why I want an explanation for that.
Yeah, I got Ann Cox here from A3C, the company that made the proposal, and she could very well explain that to you.
Hello. Thank you for your time this evening. I'm Ann Cox with A3C Collaborative Architecture. As a part of our proposal, we put together a timeline of approximately three months that we would accomplish the study. So it's the initial interviews, follow-up interviews, and then building evaluation and final report out. So to the best of our projected abilities to say that the time would be about three months.
Well, I guess my question is, because you're going to do renovations or new construction?
This study is going to help determine. They're going to look at deficiencies in the construction in the existing building and see if there's any potential to correct that building or update that building versus the cost of a new building, and that's something that's going to be borne out in this report.
Yeah, so this is a study. So this doesn't, we might do some diagrams to show how you might better utilize certain parts of the building, but this is not construction documents. This is space programming, future projections, and then high-level cost estimating to determine if there were certain renovations that were needed in the building versus what it would cost to build new. So you sort of get the idea of if you were to renovate the building, to bring it up to a certain standard versus what it would cost to build something new.
Because preliminary, you would have done that in the scope of the project. That's how you came up with this. So you already got a pretty good guideline of what you're looking at, of what you guys already need, right?
Yeah, a part of the study will be, will determine what it is that they need. Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. That'll determine what the next steps may or may not be.
It's similar to the process that the library went through a couple of years ago, look at sites.
Yep, that's correct. This building is, I believe, our oldest building. We took possession of the building in the 60s, and it was a DPW building, so I'm not entirely certain when it was constructed.
67. Still has the original windows.
However, we do know that, you know, the board's going to have to make some decisions on potentially expensive renovations and moving forward. You know, we know that there's issues with the building, the layout and how it works operationally, so we felt it was good to do an evaluation before we invest more money in that building.
When I first got married, I lived about three blocks from there, down in South Park. Life has gotten, as far as financially, better, but married 47 years now, so. I'm married with your building and been in there.
I was 31 yesterday, so.
Any other questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item D, Health Department Staff Development, 2021.
I'd make the motion.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item E, Health Advisory Board Appointment.
I'll make the motion, but I do have a question.
Support.
Because nobody's here to explain this person that's going to be on it. We're just going to take it. Lisa, you know, maybe you can give us a rundown on the person that's going to be on the board.
Sure. So it's Dr. Shishma Reddy, who's asked to be appointed. According to the bylaws right now of the Board of Health Advisory, it is required that someone on the board have a medical license. And so there was an RN on the board, and she has decided to step down. So now we're looking for someone with a medical license to take over that position.
Because she thought it was a vacancy.
Yeah, yep.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. There are no other Human Services matters. For information only, there was the Health Department Points of Interest.
Motion to receive and file.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Can I have a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you. Call the Judiciary and Public Safety Committee meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Here.
Commissioner Beeden?
Present.
Commissioner Bohm?
Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Bandenbosh?
Here.
Commissioner McConnell?
Here. Item two additions to the agenda, we have two A, which I'd like to see put in as seven B, the fiscal year 21 MDHHS contract with probate court. So moved.
Support.
We have motion support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Could I have a motion to approve the contract or the?
I'll make a motion to accept the amended agenda.
Support.
Motion, all in favor, please.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Are there any citizens to be heard? Seeing none. Any updates? Conceptual initiatives? None. We have no old business. Item seven A, fiscal year 22 MMHCGP, the letter of agreement with St. Clair County Community Mental Health in the amount of $72,736. This is with the court system. I'd move this to be sent to the full board.
Support.
We have motion and support. Any questions?
Where's this money coming from?
This comes from our mental health court grant.
If there's no more questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. If we could bring item seven B, if we could get a motion?
So moved.
Support.
So we have motion. Mike is, oh, there he is. You moved on me.
I'm slippery.
Right.
Never been accused of being sneaky, but slippery.
Thank you.
Wow.
Well, that's fair. That's fair. Good evening, commissioners. From my understanding, there's a couple points of discussion on this contract. I'm sure you're curious as to why you're approving a contract from a year ago. I would like to address that if permissible. So, you know, we get about a handful of these contracts a year. We get a couple from CMH. We get a couple from DHS. Ultimately, they come in, some come in after the service has been performed, some come in before the service has been performed. And in September of 2020, the contract came across my desk. I signed it, and it had not come to the board. So that was 100% oversight on our offices, frankly, on me, and I certainly apologize for that. So we've put things in place. We kind of have a different method in our office to account for these contracts coming in. You know, COVID was an interesting time. DHS had a lot of turnover there, so we didn't really know what was coming in sometimes. This contract historically was invoiced quarterly. This one, we received at the end of the fiscal year, so we hopefully would have caught it before then, but we didn't. So I can assure you that this was not an intentional oversight. We didn't mean to keep it from the board. We simply overlooked it, and that's my apology for that. I think the other matter is, that we talked about, was the matter of the finances of the probate court. I know there's been some concern about the probate court and being over budget. The idea of this specific contract was to bring a person in from the DHS. It's called a donated funds position. So what we do is we split this cost. We have actually an MDHS worker embedded in the court. We pay half, the DHS pays half. The idea behind this was to, to, well, it was, there's several ideas behind this. Ultimately, we had folks, youth, who were coming into the court under a guardianship. Parents weren't doing what they were supposed to. Family members were coming in. DHS was referred. So we'd have a lot of these cases, but they weren't able to get DHS services. They weren't able to get families' first services. They weren't able to get food assistance. They weren't able to get these different things because they didn't qualify for DHS services. The point of embedding the DHS person was that we could do that. We stopped those cases from going into foster care and kept the neglect of use case slowed down with the intent to reunite the family and the child together. We've been very successful. We were hoping that we could offset that by being able to decrease the amount of attorney fees because we had to appoint attorneys on all these types of cases. We've been successful, kind of. Our problem is, is that in addition, and I'll, just so you can look here at this graph, the adults, the adult guardianship kind of jammed us up a little bit. The minor guardianships went down. The adult guardianships and guardianships with developmentally disabled folks have grown exponentially. You can see, we began this program in 2018, where we had about 800 of those adults, and we've gone up. So even though the minor guardianships have gone down, those cases that require court-appointed attorneys have gone up. So you can see, we had 800. We've gone up almost to 1,200 in the past three years, and COVID has been a problem there as well. Additionally, mental commitments. Folks who have mental health problems are afforded court-appointed attorneys as well. You can see where that has grown exponentially. You know, we've had kind of an uptick of those. I will tell you that our court-appointed attorney costs peaked in 2018 when we began this program, but have gone down. We haven't met that threshold yet of being able to say we're flush, but we're coming down. I think we're trending in the right direction. I can tell you that there's a couple different things that we have in play to hopefully get down to where we need to get. You can see that we were spending $143,000 in 2018. We're spending just over $80,000. So our plan is working. We're just not quite there yet. We're in the process of kind of a trial run with an agency, with a local law firm to do a contract so we know what our costs are going to be, so we can have a set cost. We can come to the board and come to the county administration with a set cost every year. We know what we're going to pay so we're not kind of dependent on our caseload, where it's kind of a what-what. So that's kind of where we're at on that slope. Just for some information, too, this is our guardianship cases in comparable, or in comparison to our other counties. You can see that we're double. Muskegon's pretty high. I worked in Saginaw before, and we had a ton of guardianship cases. But here we are in St. Clair. So we have quite a few, and I know that we've come before the board with public guardian, our public guardian department asking for more staff. This is the reason why as well. So that's just a couple facts and figures to show you, show the board that we are trying to get to where we need to be with this. This contract is great to Judge Tomlinson. It's really a benefit to the folks who come before our court. We're providing services. We're keeping those kids out of the foster care system. You know, we're just, we're getting there, you know, and we certainly are cognizant of the budget and we're cognizant of, you know, the impact that the courts have on the budget. We're very appreciative of the board for allowing us to continue with these programs. At this time, I would entertain any questions.
Mike, are we just more aware of what's going on in our environment, and that's why we're seeing more of the mental health issues at this level, or, I mean?
You know, it's interesting, and again, if you look at these different counties, St. Clair County has significant mental health issues, you know? You can see it through our CMH partners. There's a lot of customers here, as it were. Yeah, we're starting to see that. The last few years, there's a lot of folks, you know, we have an aging population. Those are folks who require guardians. We do have a lot of folks in the community who do require guardians. Our services are a little bit shifted. Our court tends to, we have a public guardian office, and we're, you know, we're not, not many counties do, but we do. So I think that maybe some of the other services in the county have said, okay, we'll let the court handle this. So we get those. So I think a lot of people, it's kind of commonplace, and it's been like that for decades, that, hey, we're going to refer these services to the court. I can tell you that our public guardian office and the probate court are really trying to partner. I can tell you that our public guardian office and the probate court are really trying to partner with a lot of people to try and kind of find other resources instead of coming to the court. And we're being successful, but it's going to take quite a bit of work. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Do you find that we're getting a lot of transient into the community because of our quality of services we provide in the CMH? And are they native to the area, or are they moving into the community?
I think it's a little from column A, a little from column B. I think that we do have a, I don't want to say disproportionate, but we have a higher level of substance abuse services. I think people come here. I think that we also have a large public housing population that maybe brings some folks in as well. But, you know, really, I mean, our county does have a large mental health need. You know, and again, like I said, with our aging population, with our mental health folks, our developmentally disabled folks, you know, we're, some are from here and some are from elsewhere, so. Does anybody else have any?
I probably have three questions.
Yes, sir.
You said you hired a person that was half-paid for. How did we do that if it wasn't in the budget?
Well, so we did that, we did that four years ago.
Okay.
2018, I believe. I'm sorry. So 2018, so that'd be four years ago. So we've done that. This was intended to be a renewal of that contract. However, it didn't come before the board in an appropriate fashion.
Did you, this contract been approved for 2021 to 2022 now?
It has.
And who pays for that?
So we pay for it.
Our budget or your budget?
Well, it's all, it's all our budget.
Where's the money come from?
It's from the probate court budget.
Okay. So my question is, the $71,850 that wasn't paid last year, we need to pay it now. Is that going to come out of their budget or ours? Out of their budget, of course.
Yep. It comes from the court's budget. So last year's contract typically would have been billed quarterly, so that amount is based on the state's fiscal year, not our fiscal year. So that amount would be due as of 9/30. So there is one quarter's worth of payments that technically should have been paid in 2020, so there will be an extra payment in this year's budget of about $18,000.
Okay, but that isn't going to affect the county money. That's going to affect his money.
Well, it's all part of the general fund.
All right. We are under budget this year, so it will come out of, it, there doesn't have to be additional appropriation from the county. We're under budget well enough to cover that.
As long as it got it covered, you know, because it was oversight.
I'm writing a check, Commissioner.
$71,000 is a reasonable amount of question. That's, I think, what came up with the question.
Certainly. Good. Anybody else have anything? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mike. Thank you so much. And if I don't see you, happy holidays. Thank you. You, too. Are there any other judiciary public safety matters?
I just got one. I was, I believe, with all the stuff that we're going to do, each one of us is going to get one seventh of three and a half million. Well, I ask all my townships, so I've got where they're going to put all the money. But when do you need that in, and how are we going to do that so I can report back to the townships?
If you want to submit that list to me, we'll go ahead and go through it. We are internally working on a process on just how those projects will be reimbursed or what we're going to require as far as reporting to make sure we have everything we need for our grant report.
So I have two to go. But City Memphis, they're just thinking about a fence. They're not getting that much. And I did catch the, appreciate the form you got it. So SEMCOG.
Thank you.
Comes up to like $21,87 per person if you break it down for my population. Everybody's going to be very similar, plus or minus 5%.
Thank you.
All right. Motion to receive and file packets?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Court.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening. I'd like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Environmental Public Works Committee to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner McConnell?
Here.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Present.
Commissioner Beaton?
Here.
Commissioner Bohm? Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Here.
Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Item two additions, deletion, changes. Quick, we have an addition for a SEMCOG update.
Do you want that at seven eight?
That would be wonderful.
I will make that motion.
Support.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Make a motion to accept the amended agenda.
Support.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Item three, any citizens to be heard tonight? Seeing none. Any updates from commissioners? Hearing none. Any conceptual initiatives? And tonight, no old business, new business. Item seven A Friends of the St. Clair River Gypsy Moth Presentation Phase One Proposal.
Thank you, commissioners, for allowing us to speak tonight. I just wanted to introduce ourselves. I'm Kirsten Lyons. I'm with Friends of the St. Clair River, and this is Lydia Nicholas. Lydia came to us specifically to help us with this gypsy moth program. And we're starting to use the scientific name for gypsy moth at the encouragement of the Entomological Society of America. So. So this slide is in here representing that gypsy moth is not a new problem. We have about 150 years of good science and data and experience with this pest in North America, so. And then some of you have seen this kind of thing firsthand, so this is what the caterpillars look like crawling all over decks and outdoor objects and things. And this was the source of many phone calls to your offices this year. And then some of the other impacts from gypsy moth is some pretty significant defoliation of trees. So these photos are from July, when there should be lots of leaves and shade coming from those trees. And they have been nearly 100% defoliated, some of them. So, and this was pretty widespread across the county. So some pretty stressed-out homeowners and some pretty messy outdoor spaces. So the county took some very quick action to implement a reporting mechanism. So there is now, thanks to you all, your support and your IT department, there's now a way for homeowners to report their caterpillar issues online. So we initially got about 500 reports in less than a month. And then since then, we've gotten quite a few more. There are some other methods that we have been using to find out other folks that had, didn't have the ability to report online or didn't know about the online reporting system. So we've been reaching out to township officials and MSU extension and some other entities to get lists of homeowners with their complaints that they'd collected, so. So here's where the reports are coming from. You can see that Clyde is, has received a little, a little less than half of all the 750 reports so far. So Clyde probably got about the worst of it this year. We also have been surveying in these other communities, but pretty much every commissioner district had some level of gypsy moth infestation, so it is pretty widespread across the county. So our role has been to develop public educational outreach about this topic and also to do fall egg mass surveys. So by going out into the field and looking at these homeowners' properties, we can determine some things about next year's infestation. So the pest lays its eggs in July, August. So the moth lays eggs July, August. Those eggs are called egg masses. And anywhere between 100 and 1,000 eggs will hatch into caterpillars come late April or early May of 2022. And so we are finding a little over half of the properties that we have surveyed, or the acreage that we've surveyed, would qualify. And the word qualifies is in quotes because that word is qualified. But by almost every threshold, the number of egg masses that we're finding in the amount of forested area, those two things combined are going to add up to some pretty big problems come 2022. We do have two field crews out working on egg mass surveys right now. And all that data is being collected right now with the help of IT and GIS and us. In phase one of our contract, which is to be wrapping up in the next month, we wanted to make sure that we had enough data support of phase two, which would be an aerial suppression program for 2022. And it appears that we have that data now. And this, just as a screenshot of some of the GIS mapping. So you can see that, this is an older screenshot from a couple weeks ago. There's a lot more red dots on the map now. And we have, even the sidebar there of the communities that are in progress, a couple of those are actually kind of wrapping up now, too. So we're a little farther ahead on fieldwork and mapping than even what this indicates. So what does an aerial suppression program look like? Well, it looks like an airplane or a helicopter flying low. The pesticide that is used is a biological pesticide. It's certified for use in organic production, so it's not a super toxic thing. It has to be sprayed on the foliage. It has to be sprayed at just the right time. The caterpillars still have to be small. And then the caterpillars have to feed on the foliage that's been sprayed. So it works as a gut toxin. So this is, it's another one of the things that we do have good research and data on. It's very effective as long as the timing is right. And there needs to be foliage, so part of the spring fieldwork is to monitor that. So some of the things that we'll need to decide in phase two, if we move forward with an aerial suppression program, is how many egg masses per acre would qualify a property? Or what would be the minimum number of egg masses per acre that would qualify a property? What we call qualified right now is almost anybody's definition that property would qualify, so. There should be significant number of forested acres on that property. And then most suppression programs are directed at residential or high-intensity recreational land uses, so not commercial. And then we'll need to think about the minimum size and shape of spray blocks. So the one, this is a screenshot of a spray block in Macomb County from 2021. That's the ideal, is a nice rectangular square, big one. They don't all look that pretty. And then we might want to just say, okay, so if somebody has 500 acres and it's all infested with gypsy moth, maybe we just want to protect what's right around the house rather than all of that. And then certainly, cost will be a factor. So our next steps are, we're going to finish up egg mass surveys this month, keep going on data collection and cleanup, help finish GIS mapping and develop preliminary spray blocks. And then beyond that, it's time to prepare for treatment, keep going on educational outreach, respond to homeowner inquiries. There have been a lot of those. And then moving beyond that, contractor selection and finalized treatment plans. There's spring fieldwork notifications that need to happen.
Question?
Questions?
So let's don't say I have 500 acres because you're not going to get a lot of people that have 500 acres.
Yeah.
So let's just say that I own 80 acres, and 60 of it is wooded, and I have a house in the front. And last year, I've got a mess, right? I can't go barbecue. I can't do anything. But to spray 60 acres is pretty expensive.
Right.
So I decide I just want to spray my perimeter around the house so that at least I can have some enjoyment. Now, the spray should suppress those gypsy moths in that area, but they're right next door, right? It's like I made the termites move, but they're still eating everything else. They're going to be coming back. And eventually, right there in a three-year cycle, kind of?
Yeah, so.
So maybe for three years, I spray this small area, the rest of the wood is ravaged, and hopefully it doesn't kill it. But it's a way that I can at least.
Yeah.
Enjoy my outside close entertainment.
Right. So essentially, the state of Michigan's position, all of the research and agencies, their position is that gypsy moth is not an ecological threat. So the trees that are out in the way back of your 60 acres will probably be fine. But it's the trees that are right around homes and, like I said, high-use recreational areas, that's where the caterpillars are falling from the trees and the frass and the mess and the slipperiness.
Right.
So that's the part that's really stressful for our homeowners.
And you had said in our meeting before that there was some signs of possible disease or some of the natural predators. So there is some of that happening.
Yeah, so they're cyclical. So we've been finding, Lydia and I both have been finding that in some of the areas that were really, you could see that they had been very hard hit. They had defoliated evergreens and things, very small leaves on the oak trees indicating a second flush. In those, in some of those areas, we're not finding much for egg masses, and the egg masses that we are finding are very small. So just because one had a problem in 2021 does not necessarily mean that they're going to have the problem again in 2022. And that's why we're doing egg mass surveys, so that we can determine whether or not it is going to be an issue for more than one year.
Are there any other questions?
I guess just one, similar to Greg, I guess, but I've got 160 acres and 40 acres of woods. I didn't see much of an issue on my property. Right near the house, I got two oak trees, and all I did was take duct tape backwards, put it double thick, and kept them right off the tree.
Yeah, that is a great point. So there are inevitably, there's going to be homeowners that might not qualify or be able to participate in the spray program for whatever reason. And those are good strategies for those situations. There are alternatives. It's not the only thing that you can do about gypsy moth.
Dave, did you tell them you got stuck to the tree for two hours?
I was there shooting my deer.
But there are things. So part of this phase two, the next steps are.
Part of the public educational outreach is what homeowner's alternatives are.
And because there may be some homeowners who don't want the spray.
There will be. Yeah, I can guarantee you there will be people who won't want the spray.
And then in the meantime, they can use these to get the egg masses off of their trees.
Yes, they can start scraping January 1st, New Year's Day. You can start getting out there and scraping egg masses.
Any other questions?
Oh, I'm sorry to have one more.
Go ahead.
At what point do we need to start reaching out? I mean, how many contractors are available? You know, because it's a pretty small window, and we have to make sure there's somebody.
That's the problem, is that if, you know, I have a list of about 15 or 20 contractors from, that are, you know, qualified to do this aerial suppression. But they're all needed at the same time, right?
Even a preliminary, watch for maybe an RFP, but we're going to be looking?
Yeah, that is early phase two.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
And is the spray weather-dependent?
Very.
Can it wash off?
Yeah, so, yeah, so they do have to watch the weather. If it, I think it's a matter of hours, so it needs to be sprayed and then not rain for, I think it's a matter of hours. It's not days or anything.
It's about six hours.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah. So about six hours, and they also need to be noticing the wind or be conscientious of the wind because they want their.
because they want their spray to be as directly aimed as possible. But yeah, so it's about a six-hour window so it can dry on the foliage, and then it'll be good.
Last time, any more questions?
Sorry.
No problem.
Need a motion to accept the, I'll make a motion to accept the report.
Support.
Any questions on the motion? Just going to the full board?
No.
Just accept it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, there will be, the actual Phase Two contract will be on the full board agenda.
Then I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Christian and Lydia, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Item B, underground storage tank removal, change order number three, final action.
Needs to be done, I'll make that motion.
Support.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item C, a contract. Did you say something, Georgia?
No.
I didn't know, I thought it was.
Well, it should be, but.
Oh, should it be a roll call?
Yeah.
For final? Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Van den Bosch?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes. Item C, a contract approval with PM Blau Incorporated for St. Clair, Macomb, birding trail platform design.
Make a motion, send to full board?
Support.
Are there any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The 2020 inter-local agreement between Macomb County and St. Clair County for the Homeland Security Grant Program.
Motion to send to full board?
Support.
Questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item E, Resolution 2021-25, authoring closing of North Channel property for final action.
Support that. Make a motion.
I'll support.
Any questions on the motion? Roll call, please.
This one doesn't have to be, there's no money involved.
You're tricking me up.
Sorry.
All in favor? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Resolution 21-20, Citix, authoring submission of Wilson Foundation Grant for final action.
Make a motion to support? Or make a motion?
Support.
Whatever I'm doing.
Any questions on the motion or the support? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Fort Rashid Lighthouse Lantern Room Watch Room Restoration Project. Nancy is in the crowd tonight if anybody has any questions on this.
Motion sent to full board?
Support.
Any questions?
But if you haven't been in there lately, you should go visit.
I have not been in a long time.
Absolutely should. Very, very impressive property.
Maybe Nancy will take the board for a tour there sometime. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item H, SEMCOG update.
Hello, thanks for being here.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name's Amy O'Leary. I'm the executive director of SEMCOG. And Tiffany Gunter's here tonight, too. She's our deputy director at SEMCOG, so thank you. We're just here tonight to give a quick update about SEMCOG's activities. It's nice to come out every once in a while and just touch base. We work with a lot of your staff and the cities, villages, and townships, but it's nice to come out and meet with the full board once in a while and just let you know what we're working on and hear if there's any priorities that you all have as well. So today is just a brief overview of some of our activities. And as you know, we work in the seven counties of southeast Michigan. And we work to meet the vision that you see here on the screen. And you can see there's all kinds of different places in our region that we're really proud to work with, and many of those are in St. Clair County. So this is our membership map. We are seven counties. We include cities, villages, townships, intermediate school districts, community colleges are all members of SEMCOG. So we have over 175 members right now. Our delegates from the county are Commissioner Baldwin, Commissioner Bohm, and then the alternates are Dave Struck and Georgia Phalen. Now, while they're the actual alternates and delegates to the organization, you're all welcome to attend. We have a number of webinars every month and different opportunities if others would like to engage with the organization. You're always welcome. This just gives you an overview of the types of activities that we work on. So if you ever have topic areas, we work often with friends of the St. Clair River. It's good to see you guys. But we work in transportation, environment, community economic development, and education. So in the areas of transportation, for example, we're responsible for development of the long-range transportation plan. That makes us eligible for $1 billion a year in construction projects to happen in southeast Michigan. So this map and this pie chart just shows every four years we do a tip called the Transportation Improvement Program, which is the list of projects. And so these are the types of projects that are listed for St. Clair County. So for that period in time, it's over $500 million. One of the things that we do a lot of, too, when it comes to all the different planning areas, but specifically right now, transportation and infrastructure is really look at all of the federal legislation that's going on. So we've been studying as much as we can with how big the packages, the infrastructure package has passed, and what does that mean, for example? So Tiffany's been working on that a lot as well. But like for a lot of these programs that you see here, we're estimating around a 25% increase in funds in formula programs for road construction to come through. We also do a lot of work in traffic safety. It's a big priority for the organization. And I know for all of you, we analyze and share our crash data. And it's, we base that information on the severity of the crash, for example. So you can get our maps and look at how severe the crash is and where it's located. But also from a lot of different other things, like if you're interested in young drivers, traffic crashes dealing with alcohol, traffic crashes that are pedestrian or bicycle. You can analyze the data in a lot of different ways to try and be helpful. One of the things that we've seen since COVID that's pretty disturbing, though, is we've had a 10-year high in traffic fatalities. So the crashes are down, but fatalities are actually up. And that continues to be the trend in 2021 as well. We at SEMCOG work a lot in trails, and I know you all are very interested in trails. So it's been nice working with the county on these efforts. In the last three years, we have a transportation alternatives program that Commissioner Baldwin's involved with as well in one of our committees in approving projects. But we've been able to fund about $1 million in projects in St. Clair County into the communities in St. Clair County, both to develop the St. Clair County Trails Plan, but then also to implement the plan with a lot of different projects on the ground. We have a number of environmental initiatives. One, we do a lot of works in parks and trails, like we mentioned. And one of the efforts we worked on was Park Finder, which is an app you can download that highlights all of the parks that are in southeast Michigan and sorted by all the different amenities so that people that are interested in certain amenities can search and find what they're most interested in. We've also mapped over 1,000 miles of our region's water and land trails so people can get a look at what that looks like before they go out. But our environmental work isn't just parks and trails. It's also infrastructure and underground infrastructure. In fact, we've done a lot of work on the water, sewer, and stormwater infrastructure, gathering data from local communities and assimilating it and analyzing it to look at what's the condition. We do a lot of work in the past on the condition of the road system. This is looking at the condition of the underground infrastructure and being able to analyze that roughly 30% of our underground infrastructure is in poor condition. And then what will it take to bring that up to fair or good condition? And that's roughly $3.5 billion a year in our region to be able to do that. And that's just for the pipes. So when we talk about infrastructure funding and what we're getting from the federal government, it's really an important thing to do improvements that need to happen in our region and in the county. But it's not the silver bullet of fixing all of our infrastructure issues by any means. We also work in community economic development. There's a number of different topics that we work on. But one of the things we are is we spend a lot of time making sure we understand whether it's the infrastructure package or the new grant programs that are coming out from EDA, the Economic Development Administration, understanding what they have and making sure that our communities are connecting to those projects as much as possible. So for example, one of the topics that is of interest of EDA is funding coal communities that have historically been a community that has been using coal as a way of, as a revenue source to be able to help come up with ways to have a more resilient economy. And so we've brought all the coal communities together in the region to have conversations about that and being able to take advantage of its $300 million that EDA is putting out there for communities that have had industries that have relied on coal in the past. We also are looking at becoming the Economic Development District for southeast Michigan. That would include, obviously, St. Clair County and working with Dan Casey and others in your county to make sure that we're in alignment with projects and their priorities as well. So I'm going to turn it over to Tiffany to do the second half.
Thank you, Amy, and good evening, commissioners. I'm going to take on, while Amy took on the major infrastructure items such as transportation and water infrastructure. Those have an obvious synergy, what's above the road and below the road go hand in hand. I'll talk a little bit more about community and economic development and education and sort of wrap that up with the work that we're doing in that space. Before getting into that, though, just to kind of put it all into context, we recognize that as we entered into the pandemic and are still in the midst of it, but obviously learning to live and function within it, we began over the summer hosting a series of meetings called The New Future for various topics. And we brought in experts and leaders and impacted stakeholders to talk about what the new future of southeast Michigan looks like, given what we've learned through the pandemic. And the goal of these conversations was to really increase our understanding of the issues that the different cities, villages, townships, and counties experienced during the pandemic on these several different key issues. And we wanted to think about it from a quality of life and prosperity perspective. And these topics range from mobility and transportation to office and commercial space, how to repurpose those areas, and water infrastructure as well. For each topic, we shared what the data has told us before the pandemic, what was going on. So we knew what was, what our baseline was prior to the shutdown, what changes had to happen because of the pandemic. And then what do we do? What do we do in terms of expectations for the coming year to shore ourselves up, make sure that we're ready for any other and anticipated, you know, shutdowns of any sort and prepare for immediate and long-term impacts as well. So shown here are some of the resources and priorities that came out of one of the sessions, and that was on the new future of parks, trails, and recreation. What we saw was an uptick in use of these recreation trails and parks that was really impressive as people sought out things to do outside because inside was no longer available to them. And as we moved through there, we also looked at electric vehicles as part of our conversation. But I want to talk about that from a different perspective. And that's really the work that our team has been working to develop this. We call it an EV hub, electric vehicle hub, a resource kit and planning hub. And when we looked at our economic development strategy, which I'm missing a slide, and this is why this feels a little odd here. What I did not talk about is the economic development strategy that we passed last summer, and that was the Increasing Shared Prosperity Plan. And really, what I'm going to, the next couple of slides are going to talk about elements of that plan. So I don't know what happened to that slide in transition. However, this is what we're now talking about, is our economic development strategy. And so as part of that strategy, we emphasize growth of electric vehicles. We're really trying to at SEMCOG look at what's coming and be prepared for it and have our communities ready for it as these things are becoming more pronounced. And so we have to plan for this infrastructure and coordination for charging stations and as before everyone has an electric vehicle. So on the screen here is SEMCOG's Electric Vehicle Resource Kit and Planning Hub. This is available on our website. This tool was developed really to provide local communities and stakeholders quick access to key data and background information that includes the current status of infrastructure and deployment, community zoning and planning ordinances, funding opportunities, and local case studies, along with best practices. So it tries to be as comprehensive as possible while you're thinking about electric vehicle resources. This is an ever-evolving tool. So when we find a charging station that perhaps we didn't have before, we do add it and we try to make it as up-to-date as possible. One of those highlighted here, I think you can see it on the screen, I'm not sure, is the Blue Water Area Transit and DTE Energy purchased two 100% EV buses that are now in operation, I believe. So this resource, again, is continually being updated to make sure it can serve as a one-stop electric vehicle planning and implementation tool. It's something that the state of Michigan has actually looked at trying to expand upon for going beyond the southeast Michigan region because of its comprehensive nature. Just one last example of implementing our economic development strategy is our Shop Local Southeast Michigan campaign. This effort initially launched one year ago as one resource that our team can provide to really promote local shopping in our communities. And it was refreshed this past weekend for Shop Small Saturday with a couple of additional communities. This campaign, in partnership with our local communities, is to highlight and promote our small businesses and support them as they have long supported us as well. So shown here is the promotional material we used for the Shop Local campaign in Port Huron. And then lastly, the education side. With all of these things with respect to transportation, water infrastructure, community economic development, we have to have a trained workforce to attract and retain population in this region as well. So supporting quality education is a high priority for SEMCOG, which includes our future skills work. We've identified a number of recommendations related to building support for multiple career pathways and addressing challenges faced by students related to the transition from high school to post-secondary education and training. And additionally, what we saw is the pandemic accelerated growing trends in technology, making it even more critically important to train workers for future, the future in-demand careers in areas such as mobility, advanced technology, and healthcare. We're working in partnership with our Metropolitan Affairs Coalition to really think about ways in which we can attract people to non-traditional careers and make sure that the training resources that are out there available and abundant are made known to those who are seeking opportunities for this type of employment. So with that, I'll close on how to engage with SEMCOG if you're interested or if there's a topic that you've heard about this evening. We've given you sort of a high-level overview of the work that we do. We think that our work is germane to every city, village, township, and county within the region. The first thing is every two weeks, we send out a newsletter. It's called Regional Update. And this newsletter really is the quickest way to stay informed about everything that SEMCOG is engaged in. It has any upcoming meetings, grant deadlines, legislative issues that are pertinent to our communities, and activities within SEMCOG such as the webinars that Amy referenced earlier. You might also consider getting more involved by requesting an appointment to a task force. These groups are where much of our work at SEMCOG is done. Our next two task forces will be on infrastructure and traffic safety. So do please let us know if you're interested in serving or have a staff who may be interested in participating in that task force. It is not a 100% commitment. If you come to one meeting, you don't have to come to all. But it's just really good to sort of hear how other communities are thinking about these things. We do continue to engage and educate our public through several different campaigns. Right now, the Walk Bike Drive Safe, we're moving through that to make sure that, you know, as we go through daylight savings time, it's darker earlier in the evening, and that's when we see a lot more pedestrian conflicts with automobiles. So we have that campaign to just keep people aware and remind them of the importance of vehicle and pedestrian safety as well. And then our Water Campaign, it just reminds folks of what not to put down the drains, is also a very popular campaign, and we like to have a lot of fun with that. And we work with our friends at St. Clair as well. So one of the beautiful tools, I think, about SEMCOG is we have a really talented team, and we have a videographer, a planning staff that really helps tell stories and promote and talk about your local successes in a way that I think is useful to us all. When one community is doing well, others hear about it, and then all communities can do well. So we've partnered with the City of Chelsea to highlight a bike lane project and with the City of Howell to showcase downtown safety and place-making enhancements. And those just really. And those just really highlight the work in the community and let the constituents and the residents know what you've been up to. So lastly, SEMCOG is actively engaged in legislative issues that are important to local government. As Amy mentioned before, I've been working to sort of dissect the 2,702-page infrastructure bill and understand what that means for southeast Michigan. It is a fun task, and there are a lot of opportunities that did not exist before. We're looking at a $1.2 trillion bill, of which $550 billion are new. $274 billion of those go to transportation specifically. And a lot of that money is formulaic. But in addition to that, there's a lot of competitive grant opportunities that just didn't exist before that now we have the opportunity to look at and go for. And the regional organizations, the entities such as SEMCOG, are eligible to go after those and to distribute that money within these communities. So we'll learn more about that as we continue on. And we just really hope that you continue to look at Regional Update for news and information about what SEMCOG's been up to. And thank you so much for your time this evening. Oh, do I have more information here for you? I do. So I'm going to finish off with training opportunities. It looks like we have, we wanted to invite you all to an educational workshop that we are hosting next week. So if you're available, these are webinars, and they feature an overview of upcoming funding opportunities and a Q and A with the Department of Natural Resources Grant Coordinators while also highlighting successful projects and recent awards in southeast Michigan. So you can view all of our past SEMCOG universities, workshops, and on-demand in our on-demand webinar library that's accessible from our homepage. And you can see the address for that there. And I always forget about this one because I'm not a great user of social media guy. So if you are, you know what these icons here are, and we are on all of these platforms. So please do, in your spare time, if you just want to learn a little bit more, see some really cool campaigns that we've run, check us out on YouTube, Facebook, Twitter, and the like. And that really is the end of this presentation.
Thank you for the presentation. That was very nice. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
You're free to go.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for being here.
Need a motion received?
I do need it.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Smith, Crick, Landfill?
Landfill report?
Support.
Questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any other environmental public works?
You know, just one thing, Nancy left IC and I was going to, you have a park, you had a park meeting.
Yeah. Well, there's, next Wednesday, there's one else.
Next Wednesday?
Yes.
We need to bring up again, if we could, the trail, the Edison from Avoca to Yale. We struggled before with, I think there was a little bit of a, I don't know if confrontation is the right word or not, but between Mark and the president of DTE, and I think the statement was made that as long as I'm the president, you're never going to get that. So we now have a new person in charge, and we have a new person in charge. And I think it would be a great time
Absolutely.
to approach that again. They're never going to use that railway. I mean, they show, there's trees in there that are, you know, that are eight inches in diameter growing up through the tracks. So the track as it exists will never be used. So it would be, that would be the good finality to get out to that end of the county. And I think it's something that we need to address. So if you could bring that up at the park meeting.
I'll bring that up next week.
Yeah, maybe Nancy could get, you know, try to get in touch. And Jeff seems to have good connections and.
In our lobbyists, so Bill Greitap, we tried this in Fort Grasset, too, for years and years to get some right of way. And we just couldn't make any headway. But just recently, Bill Greitap was able to get to the right attorney in their corporate council somewhere in Detroit during the pandemic to get him to sign the papers. So like this is the time, I think, to strike because they're ready and waiting.
They're receptive and, yeah, there's lots of things we can do. I mean, if they need the right of way to come back and do something someday, it's always still there.
Always their right of way, right.
Yeah.
Right corporate counsel?
Right. Our corporate counsel is always on board.
Ish. Thanks for that, Greg.
Duke, I got one thing I forgot to mention. We've done really well this week on the DNR Trust Fund. And two of our projects scored out two, and the other one was four. And I mean, that's so high compared to some of the other communities. We did so well. I just want to thank Jeff did a lot of work with that and Nancy and Mark did back in the day to get these.
Started.
You know, to score so well and do, you know, Three Rivers and that.
When did they pick? When is the?
I saw an email today, and those two projects were on it from the state.
Were approved.
Yes.
Okay.
We haven't been paid for them.
Right.
We made it.
It will be funded.
Yes.
Great.
Nice. So we still got to make a deal with the landowner down in Clay Township. But hopefully, we can do that, have a great negotiation with them. Because it didn't score, it didn't grade out as much as he was hoping for through the appraisal. But we'll see what we can do.
Great. Any other matters? Item number 10, information only, monthly parks and rec.
Motion received and filed?
Support.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion received and filed packets?
Questions? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? 12 adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
I'd like to call the Ways and Means Committee to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner McConnell?
Here.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Present.
Commissioner Beeden?
Here.
Commissioner Bohm?
Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Commissioner Van den Bosch?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Do we have any citizens wishing to be heard? Seeing none. No updates? No conceptual initiatives? No old business? We'll go right to new business. 7A, Contract Approval Request, 2022 Resa Service Agreement.
Let me make the motion sent to the full board.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. 7B, Blue Cross Blue Shield Annual Renewal. Motion to send to the full board?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. 7C, Delta Dental Contract Renewal.
Make a motion, send to the full board.
Support.
I do have a question for Kerry. Went through it, and I didn't go because I was pretty, but you had different levels. Is that from the contracts or?
Let me look at that one real quick.
There's a lot in there, so.
I think it's going to be for the different groups. So I believe that there's the active groups and the retiree groups.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. I believe 7D, we just need to table that one for now?
If we could, I mean, I'm prepared to discuss this evening. But what we were hoping to do as part of this process is schedule a follow-up meeting with the police chiefs to the one I had back in September and have Dr. Spitz attend as well, just so we could work out what the new procedure would look like. Unfortunately, with our shortened schedule in December and just some other scheduling conflicts, we have not been able to have that scheduled. And I don't believe we will prior to our full board meeting. So I would like to move this to January, please.
If we could, you would remove it until you're ready to put it back on rather than table it? We could remove it until, at what time you get the meetings together?
You actually don't have to remove it. If you just don't make a motion, it'll die.
Just take no action, and then it'll show back up when it needs to be heard.
Kerry, they do have an opening for us on Wednesday, if you'd like, at the police chief's meeting. I talked to Chief Heslop and Coach today. They would make some room for us at their meeting on Wednesday if you're interested.
I don't know. It'll depend on Dr. Spitz's schedule. I know a lot of their questions are very operational and procedural that I feel he would be the best one to answer those, so.
Absolutely. Okay.
I'll make note of that.
Okay.
Okay, from hearing that, I recommend no motion be made. Can we move to 7E? County Clerk Manning table change.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. The next four are resolutions, and they're all for final action. First one is Resolution 2128, Establishing Predimes for Board and Commissions. This is final action. I'd make a motion.
Support.
Any discussion? I don't think we need to have a roll call. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. 7G, Resolution 2129, Elected Officials' Wages for 2022, Final Action. So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. 7H, Resolution 2130, Establishing Wages for Canoe 2022. So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. 7I, Resolution 2131, 80/20 Cost Sharing Model Adoption, Final Action.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Do we have any other Ways and Means Matters at this time? Motion to receive and file packets?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Need a motion to adjourn?
Adjourn. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'm not going to answer them. We stand adjourned. Good job, Kerry.
Once again.